Good morning. Today is December 31st, 2018. I'd like to call this meeting of the Logan County Commissioners to order. Please rise for the White's.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item three, any citizen desiring to be heard? Hearing none. And we'll move on to item four. Consideration and possible action on approving minutes for December 6th and 14th.
I'll make the motion.
Except.
I'll second.
Have a motion in the second to approve the agendas as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item five, consideration of possible action to approve final plat of Charter Oak Hills, Section 3, in southeast border of Section 24-15 north to west.
Well, since I don't see him here, I'll ask the board to move this to the back.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe they'll get here.
Okay. It's in process. We'll put a weight on this one. Move on to item six, consideration of possible action to award bid 2019-7, six-month cold patch tabled from December 14th, 2018.
I'm gonna go with Logan County.
I as well.
Asphalt.
Not gonna go with Leo Hicks.
What's that?
That was from the French war zone. So I have, uh... Item two, you've, uh...
He selected Logan County.
I'd as well. Logan County as well. Might as well make it unanimous.
I'll move on then.
I'll second. Have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Logan County asphalt. Cold patch. Item seven, consideration of possible action to award six-month bid for rock hauling for tabled from December 14th.
On hauling, well, he had one bid around transportation. I move the building. I go with brown anyway.
I as well. I'll, uh... I'll third that if there was a motion.
That was my motion.
Second. Have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection.
Let's see here. Item eight, consideration of possible...
Wait. That motion was just on, on the hall.
Right.
We need to select the actual rock pickup.
Okay, on pickup. District three wants to go with Stewart Stone, I think. Let me, let me look at that guy, Stewart Stone.
Already know where you are. Stewart Stone. As cushion.
And I would use an alternate, but we need to select an alternate.
We do cushion. I mean, uh, Stewart Stone up there, out of Paul Newton too. Secondary. I'll look out for that.
So Stewart Stone cushion for all three?
Yeah.
Okay.
So a motion? Second. Have a motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Item eight, consideration of possible action to award bid 2019-10 for six-month asphalt, crushed asphalt tabled from 14th December.
Crushed asphalt, District three would like to go with TJ Campbell.
District two as well. District one, the same.
Okay.
For mine. Hot Mix delivered to location. I would... I, I want Haskell Lemon. They're, they're a little bit higher, but they always come out and provide the tackle. And that's hard to put a value on when I can't shoot bone tackles. District three would like Haskell Lemon.
District two as well. Get medical service. I think we're all in violent agreement on that one.
And just so I can clarify, so they are not the lowest, but they are the best?
So I, I've experienced the, the product that we get from them is also a little better product.
Okay. Quality and they provide a tackle with purchase?
Mm-hmm.
And, okay.
I'll move that would take Haskell Lemon and TJ Campbell for...
Yeah, I'll second that. Have a motion in the second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item nine, consideration of possible action to approve resolution establishing the north and east Logan County Emergency Medical Services District. We've got the resolution.
Yeah. Troy, thank you, Troy. I, I looked over that and, uh, what about that bond deal?
LOL has emailed me and I forgot to bring it with me. There's a constitutional requirement for the members to have a bond. And I guess in Pen County, there was a bond that, the bond amount was set by, by the constitution by the board. And, and the minimums are 10,000. And I'm still following up that the bond that they have according to LOL can be by position. So we have a bond on file because they have a treasurer and they receive funds. So I'm just gonna verify that the bond that we have currently applies to all positions. It's not, you're not, it's not that the individual person on their own goes out and gets a bond. I know that was your concern. And that, that is not my, what I'm getting back from LOL.
Okay. All right. But we, we haven't done anything as far as bonding, uh, this upcoming board that's yet to be appointed, right?
That's what this, 'cause it says in here.
Right.
Right. So we will have that in place, yes, per this resolution. But he brought it up based on the other two boards. Monty had asked me to, to cross-check some things with LOL about. He was reading it as if the individual trust member had to on their own go get a bond.
I see.
He'd have a tough time getting a board together.
Yeah.
Volunteer board. They gotta shell out.
All right. So it's gonna be covered in a blanket, bond.
Right.
Good.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Have a motion in the second to approve this resolution. Any further discussion?
I have some questions. I just wanna make sure the process, since this formalizes the establishment of the district, we will now advertise for, for board members. Are we just going to leave that as an open? We'll put it out and just leave it open? Or are we going to try to set, seize how this is all getting started, brand new? I've never been through the creation of one, so I'm not quite sure how you wanna go about doing that. Do you wanna try to get all the applicants at once or you wanna try to piecemeal appointments? What does the board want to do?
Uh, advertise for, uh, a month and see what we get back? I imagine so.
I agree.
There's no way you could tell. I mean, the intent is to have one for school just for school.
And I've already been contacted by somebody that was, was interested a few weeks back, so...
True.
The N-E-L-C-E-M-S-M-S-B?
Yeah.
N-E-L-C-E-M-S-B? The acronym.
Oh, the acronym for that?
Yeah, but it would've been a lot easier.
That's what I'm thinking. Martin and mine.
Chairman, we have no items for ten and eleven.
So this is... All right. Item twelve, consideration of possible action to approve temporary road crossing permit for collecting...
Carol Seale.
I am going to step out and see if they're cutting.
These folks have been calling and wanting special... Did special treatment? Special, yeah. We didn't know we had to do all this and can you just let us put it in now and we'll pay you later?
They got it, just under the new old rule.
Right.
So they're getting a bonus, that, they should be happy for that part.
But the old, the, the new rule, the, the fifteen hundred dollar fine is on the website now. And that makes them feel, ah, didn't know that. So I'll put it published now. Let's all be good neighbors. Couldn't buy it, huh?
Now we can serve.
Okay.
No votes.
I'll move with approved temporary road crossing permits.
Second. Have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Without objection. All right.
There he is.
Morning.
Oh, Bud!
How you doing?
Long time no sleep.
How you doing?
Long time no sleep.
Oh, yeah. I know. They keep me busy.
Wherever we're at, yeah, okay. Back to item five.
That would be you.
Consideration of possible action to approve final plat of Charter Oak Hills, Section 3, in southeast border of Section 24-15 north to west.
Do you need copies of these?
They should be signing them.
Yeah, okay. I think I've got every, that's underneath there. That's great. I think I've got everybody's signature.
You figured that pipeline out, huh?
Yeah. We had to replat everything, vacated the first plat.
Right. How many hells and houses are you proposing?
So this first phase will be 22.
22.
And the next phase will be 49. So it'll be 71 total.
Wow. It's a lot of hells.
Yeah.
It's locked there at work.
This is east of the school.
You still have cells, same cell phone number from years ago?
Off the post and...
Charter.
Charter.
Is there just to the east of the new school?
Yes.
In that second entry going into that issue? And off to the east side of that?
A lot of direction there.
Yep.
So I knew it was coming, but I didn't know, you know?
Yeah.
Till I saw you moving stuff in there.
Yeah. We've got everything flowing over there to that Tenth Horn Mount Post, so...
Thank you. Appreciate that.
It worked out nice.
Yeah.
We've got our flu at the south end of the subdivision headed right towards the Tenth Horn. I know we're jumping our other flu by the pond halfway up, which is still retaining that same creek going into Tenth Horn as well, so...
Well, hopefully we got it sized so that it'll handle all that new water.
I think so. Yeah. It seems to be flowing well. We've got a low spot right in front of it that we need to get filled in, but until I got my road to height, I didn't wanna start messing with that yet.
Got you. Got you.
It's just a tall little puzzle coming together.
Of course. Oh, yeah.
All right.
Well, I'll make the, uh... Motion that we accept this plat.
I'll second.
Have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Now, is this, uh, private or public?
Private. It's a HOA. Charter Oak's gonna take you over. We're gonna accept it into their HOA.
Okay. Any talk of gates across the thing?
They've talked about it. The only problem is, is the next phase I'm tying back in into the original subdivision, so they would have to gate the main entrance. And they said they don't have the money for it right now. But...
Yeah.
Possibly, you know, if... I told them I'd be willing to do it on my side if they would take care of the main entrance there, so it's a possibility. As of right now, though, we're trying to keep the price point under Silva. You know? We're trying to keep it about 40, 50,000 less than Silva on the purchase price, so it's a totally different, uh...
Way down here.
Am I the only one today?
The only plat, yeah.
Has Dan talked to you about the road or what was he doing on that deal? You know, I haven't even talked to him about it.
Probably I'll talk later. I'm not sure. You know?
I know he's the type of...
So I heard the pipeline screwed everything up.
Yeah. And it did.
I know.
I'm sure he'll be hitting you up pretty quick.
Talking about putting another pipeline through my yard.
Really? Another one?
Two.
Do you have a total of two or three?
I had two.
All righty. And they're talking about putting another one?
Just gonna be a little more trouble.
So, you know, you take these from here over and get them recorded and then go get your little one made and then bring it all back?
Right. Okay, the little one has to be scanned and recorded, so those scan, I'll take...
So what you're gonna, they're gonna do is they're gonna record these two milars, then you're gonna take one of the milars down and get a legal-sized copy, so it'll be a finished, complete, final copy and bring it all back.
Okay.
There we go.
I hope I'll run out there today and get this done today. Thanks. I appreciate it so much.
Good luck.
Thank you so much. Y'all have a good, uh, new year and...
Happy New Year.
We'll, uh, we'll keep rocking and rolling on this thing.
You bet. I give you a shot.
All righty.
Okay, I think we're finished with item five. We'll move on to...
Thanks, guys.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 13, consideration of possible action on consent agenda.
There's federal. And then the two transfers, this one and the board signs down here. Morgan, when this one makes it down here, here's where the board, but I need you, this is on your transfer on your front.
I'll use this one too, honey.
Yeah. That one'll be at the top.
I did it twice.
On that one, yes. Upper left when you're done with the board position.
Upper left.
See where your thumb is? Right there.
Mm-hmm. All right.
I like it.
I'm guessing, is there anything that's tied to a calendar year? If I know anything, so a fiscal year, is there anything tied to a calendar year?
All of my, um, my minutes work by the calendar. Um, so resolution numbers, road crossing permit numbers.
So they'll start over.
Number of days till Christmas starts over again.
It's true.
Has anybody seen the sheriff since the OU gang?
I remember something on social media, but I can't remember what it was. But it had, it was something with OU though.
I heard he was taking it pretty hard and had his...
The further you go, the more it hurts.
Boy, look at you beautiful guy.
Might be on the defense coordinator hiring board.
The election board secretary's claiming it just goes down. Alcoholic beverage tax.
Talk about it going down. I don't know. I can't. I can't, I don't know. It's what the newspaper's been saying. That's it. 20,000. Was, I think, about 15,000, so it looks like to me that he's interested.
Does it even consent?
It is.
I'll make a motion with a favor to consent agenda items.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item 14, consideration of possible action on approving claims for payment for December 2018.
That was the same.
That's all. Consistent. Thank you, yes. Oh, I see. They play the day on. This is good timing.
OD3, I can tell.
I don't know. OD2.
I'll move with approved claims.
I'll second. Have a motion in the second. Item 14, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous.
There's nothing for 15.
15. Move on to item 16, any citizen desiring to be heard? Hearing none. Item 17, comments, announcements, questions by the Board of County Commissioners. Mike?
Nothing serious.
End of the year.
End of the year. There we go.
Mine. I have none. And I'm gonna end the year with nothing as well. And then, uh, the last thing we'll do this calendar year is, uh, vote on item 18 to adjourn. All in motion?
I'll second.
Have a motion in the second.
Get ahead.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned for the year. We are adjourned for the year.